This conference will now be recorded.
Roll call.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Commissioner Gager?
Yes, here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Hall? Mayor Roberts?
Here. All those wishing to participate in the opening prayer and pledge allegiance, please stand.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, as we gather here to work towards a common goal, we ask for your presence to guide and direct our decisions. We know your will is good for all members of our community. We also pray for our police, our fire department, city workers, and hospital workers for their safety in the work they do. Do this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yeah, under new business, we would like to add a SCK Health and the unplugged healthcare sales tax fund, the amount of $253,690.84.
Did you say SCKL?
Uh, SCK Health.
SCK Health, okay.
Under new business?
Yeah, that'll be item number two.
I assume we approve the addition of item number two on a new business for SCK Health. Second, all those in favor of the addition for SCK Health, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Next up, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second for the approval of the agenda with the addition. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next up will be the proclamation. Whereas emergency medical services, oh, I didn't see there already. Yep, well, you guys get in here. Man, they got a lot. We're from two to four. Come and do it now. You want to do down here? Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public need, especially in this time of the pandemic. And whereas members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves both the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas emergency medical services systems consist of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, police officers, dispatchers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas members of medical, emergency medical services team, whether career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value of a combination of emergency medical services providers by designating National EMS Week, which was first authorized in 1984 by President Gerald Ford. Now therefore, I Scott Rogers, Mayor of the City of Arc, Kansas City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16 through 2022, yeah, 22, 2021, as National EMS Week in Arc, Kansas City with the theme, "This is EMS: Caring for Our Communities", and encourage our community to observe this week with appropriate recognition programs, ceremonies, and activities. I don't know. Do you hear the proclamation with you? The law was printed.
Come on down. We still want to congratulate.
Yeah, we'll still congratulate because you guys do.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being so brave.
Hey, thank you.
Last year. Had to be.
Great for you.
Thank you. That's okay. You're incapacitated.
That's right. Give back.
But you do appreciate.
Thank you for volunteering there, sir.
Well, we appreciate every.
Thank you, guys, for everything you do, so.
Appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks. Thank you. You'll give them the proclamation? All right. Next up, any recognition of visitors? Saying none, item number four would be comments from audience for items not on the agenda. Saying none, move on to the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion. Will you approve the consent agenda presented?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded for the approval of the consent agenda, which is the May 4, 2021 meetings and a resolution authorizing the City of Arc, Kansas City to accept the proposal submitted by Schmucker Lumber of Inman, Kansas to purchase metal roofing material to replace the roof at Central Shop for an amount not to exceed $22,906.10. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next up, new business.
A resolution authorizing the City of Arc, Kansas City to waive the right of first refusal on our properties located at 509 West Maple, 1304 North 12th, and 1402 North 15th.
Apparently, back when these properties were developed, I think there's duplexes on them now, there was a right of first refusal on the deed of property from the city. We have no use for the properties, and so we would just waive our right to, for that right of first refusal. So just basically, if you guys approve of that, we just have a quick claim deed that we'll sign and send over to the closing company that, when they sell the property through us next week.
These are properties will be sold?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're changing hands.
I assume that you approve the resolution authorizing the City of Arc, Kansas City to waive the right of first refusal on properties located 509 West Maple, 1304 North 12th, and 1402 North 15th. I'll second the motion. All those in favor with the resolution, say aye. 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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number two of the new agenda.
Confederate request from SCK Health for their available funds in the unplugged healthcare sales tax fund in the amount of $253,690.84.
So somebody.
The amount? Again?
Uh, 253,000 plus.
And what? What the? Was?
It is four. Let me find it.
Charity care and new equipment. Right?
Yeah, let me, I have a.
Do you have it?
I had it. I saw one. I have the right down here. I just need to find what was sent.
I mean, it's designated for those purposes, so they can request it when they need or.
Yep.
Send in that as a general fund.
It's on my desk. Let me go grab it.
Well.
The breakdown from the requests.
What I was wondering is, they need new equipment. I was wondering why they haven't, we didn't request for new equipment.
They did. So there is, it's, the breakdown is a mammogram machine for 253,000. And then, and then they needed 55 for.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So motion was, did you make a motion? Can you, the motion been made?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, and this will be a voice vote, I believe. Is that right? Should be, yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next up would be city manager update.
Um, on your, on your table up there, I left a copy of the South Central Kansas Housing Toolkit. I put together, I mean, it's just kind of some things to consider when we're putting together policies on housing and developing, and so just something to look through. Start with Josh, and as they work on the emergency plan, there might be some other items that they talk about working to that. But I know that with the conversation that we had at the work session the other day, this might be timely. Another thing is the League of Municipalities Leadership Summit's coming up in the June, and so I left a flyer on your desk for that, so if you're interested in participating. We'll get you, get you registered. And more, and so if you need a room, I would work on that as well, so. The City of Arc, Kansas City and the U.S. Census Bureau will be co-hosting the Arc, Kansas City Chamber of Commerce Coffee at 10:00 a.m. on the May 20th. That'll be over at the water treatment facility. Following that, the Census Bureau will offer a 2020 census data training session from 11 to 2. And it'll be at the Water Treatment Center as well on the 20th. Next city commission meeting will be, or study session will be May 28th in my office at noon. Cali County Outdoor Market will return to Wilson Park, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 on Saturday, the 29th. Seventh Annual Bobby Estes Memorial Bike Ride will be Memorial Day weekend, so 9:30 to 1:00 p.m. Saturday, May 29th. Be on the hike bike trails, start over at Veterans Memorial Lake and end at Parrish Park. City offices will be closed on May 31st for Memorial Day. And Arc City Farmer, Farmer Art Market will kick off its season, 4:00 to 7:00. You can burst at Wilson Park or 10th. That's all I got.
Department reports. We have the Arc, Kansas City Police Department report. Do we have any questions, or do you want to? Should be in your pack. Something should be in your packet.
Mr. Mayor, members of the committee, thank you for the time to talk with you. I think what I'd like to do is just kind of move, so that way.
You do what you need to. You're good. Yeah, you're fine.
Just run the highlights of our annual report. So something that we've done over the last about six years is put together an annual report every year that highlights some of the activities that the police department does. So 2020 was no different. It was a unique year due to the pandemic. So as you'll see, as I walk kind of through some of these things, again, just hitting highlights, I won't take a lot of time drilling down into a lot of it because it's actually a pretty lengthy book, as you guys know from receiving that before. So again, just highlights. Can I move it?
Yeah.
So where I want to start first is our hiring practices. In 2020, we did hire two new officers, Officer Spencer Warren and Esther Law. They both went through an extensive hiring process, which consisted of a written test, oral interview board, an executive interview with the chief. And we also did a very extensive background investigation on anyone that we hired as a sworn police officer because we feel that it's very important to make sure that we have the right people out protecting and serving our community. So as it stands right now, all of our lieutenants and captains, and we're now starting to work on our sergeants, getting them to an extensive 40-hour background training. So that way, we can utilize more staff in doing those background investigations. Obviously, when we go in depth with backgrounds, it takes some time, so we're working to try and streamline some of those hiring processes. Promotions in 2020, we had two, both master police officers Cory Tuckstorn and Yvonne Malasquez. Cory actually had worked for us previously as a dispatcher when we had the dispatch center here in our city. Then she went with Cali County Emergency Communications, and she came on. They basically came on about the same time in 2016. Yvonne came to us from the Winfield Correctional Facility, so he had some background in criminal justice coming to us. Yvonne is fluent in Spanish. He's actually the only staff member that we have that is fluent in Spanish. That's something that moving forward into 2021 and beyond, we'd like to be able to grow that and maybe offer some resources to our officers in learning the Spanish language. We feel that that's going to be an asset to our department. Currently, MPO Tuckstorn is serving as our mental health officer, and I'll have some more information about that as well. We were able to secure a grant, which she is now fulfilling at this point. So training, so normally, and last year was no different, 40 hours of continuing education training for every officer that's sworn through the state of Kansas. With the pandemic, it changed a lot of how we do that. So in 2020, we had a lot of online training and also training through Zoom, which was a new experience for everyone. And moving forward, that might change the approaches moving forward into the future in '21 and '22, as we're still seeing a lot of the Zoom and online trainings that are available. So some of the activity that the officers do within the community, just to hit some of those kind of high points. ACPD is responsible for about 16,952 dispatch entries. That seems like a lot, because it certainly is. So what that encompasses is calls for service, self-initiated activities like traffic stops, and then also follow-up investigations. We make up about 43.9% of all dispatch log activity in the county. So that's split between the three agencies of us, the Sheriff's Office, and Winfield. However, this number, the 16,952, is down from 2019, which was at 23,500 is where we were at in 2019. So what we saw that through the pandemic, we were getting less calls for service and less activity through that as well.
I got a question.
Sure.
When we get more than half, right, close to half the calls, why is that? I mean, compared to Winfield and the county?
You know, I don't know for sure.
Okay.
I think that, I think the community relies on us and those that were going to respond to their needs. Plus, we're very highly motivated to go out and do self-initiated activity. We'll kind of talk about some traffic crash and traffic enforcement. So traffic stops is actually part of that as well.
Good.
So our department has always been very highly motivated to go out and work and do the best they can for.
One other question before we go on the, on the dispatch. I know when it first started, we had some problems with it, you know, Dan did and stuff. Is it going a lot more smoothly now than what it was, or are you still having problems?
I believe it is.
Okay.
I believe it is going better. They are better staffed.
Yeah. That was the problem, isn't it?
If I had a director, I think they were just one person short. So I think that their staffing issues are getting resolved. We are developing a better relationship with it.
That's wonderful. Okay.
Forty-six entries a day, by the way.
Last year. Quite a time.
We stay, we stay busy. And also through the pandemic as well, we had to switch over to more telephone reports to try to minimize the amount of contact that officers were having with people face-to-face. Because one of the things that was a challenge for the entire city staff was keeping everybody healthy. And I feel like as a department, we did very well in keeping our officers healthy and keeping staff out there in the community and serving. We had isolated COVID positive tests, but unfortunately, we didn't have a wide outbreak within the department. It was very isolated, just what took place. So talking about crime, here again, because of the pandemic, crime really kind of took a nosedive as far as numbers. We saw smaller numbers in areas such as theft, burglary, auto theft, and then auto burglary, all dipped down for 2020. We would like to be able to say that it was because of our partnership with the community, but I believe that it's probably due to pandemic and people being home during the day, those kind of things. So what we would like to do in 2021 is to continue that downward trend of less crime, especially property crime, because that seems to be the Achilles' heel for our community is property crime at this point. So let's talk about traffic enforcement. Here again, we had less traffic crashes in 2020 with 234 total as opposed to 260 in 2019, and 253 in 2018. Again, I think this is less traffic being out on the street and more people being at home. There are a lot more, there were a lot more people that were calling in and having things delivered to their home, and those kind of things. So anytime that we have less traffic on the roads, we're going to have less crashes as well. Something that was really interesting is that our drunk driving or impaired driving arrests went way up during 2020, which I know that, you know, that's, that's something that. So the argument is, okay, you have more drunk driving arrests, so there's more impaired driving on the roadway. I think it's a problem that's always there. It's just a matter of identifying it and getting those people off the roadway to make it safe for everyone.
What is, what is the national average like impaired driving per thousand?
That I don't know. The averages that I know on a weekend, they say that one in seven drivers are impaired, some alcohol or some type of substance, but that's just the national average.
Okay.
So whether I can say that that's in our community or not.
So what, what about the county? I mean, do you have those figures?
I don't.
Did you get those? Okay.
Like total D-earrests for the county, I did not.
Okay.
So to talk about use of force, because it's a hot button talking. So overall, the number of citizens that we contacted in regards to use of force went down by one person from 19 to 20. However, we had 23 more arrests in 2020 than we did in 2019. And so what we do within the police department, anytime that an officer uses force, anything that's outside of normal handcuffing procedures, they have to write a use of force report. And that use of force report is sent up to the chain of command and reviewed to make sure that it was appropriate and, so that way, we can also coach the officers just in case there are any problems with use of force in our training.
Can I read the numbers? What's, what's the number of arrests for 2020?
Um, I believe. 1,139.
And then for 2019? Twenty-three less, I guess.
Yeah, twenty-three less than that. So and then it's broken down into, for the use of force, what we look at also is the cases. So we see that it involved 12 felony cases, 21 misdemeanor cases, and eight other categorized. We also put animal euthanasia into that category as well, just so we can track it. So if we have a deer that gets hit, like on the bypass, we have to put it down. We also track that statistic as well, but we only had one in 2020.
When, when you have a use of force, is that anything other than the handcuff? Like is, if they tackle them, that included?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
So the most minor use of force that would be reported is if someone is getting ready to be handcuffed and they jerk away from the officer or pull away from the officer, that is reportable use of force.
Okay.
And we want to make sure that we track that just in case someone is injured or the officer is injured. We also want to make sure that the officers are making good choices and that everything is, that meets policy.
But all, and all those arrests like that, you got body cameras that's watching, I mean, that's filming all that stuff, so.
So and that's part of the review process.
Yeah.
Is looking at all the body worn cameras. So usually in an arrest situation, we have at least two officers or more present, so we have different views from different body worn cameras. So we may also even have vehicle recording as well. So we talk about the type of force used. Hand-to-hand tactics is obviously the biggest one at 69%, which is holds or leverages or, or things like that. Taser display, which is basically holding someone, pointing the taser at them. It basically is telling them that they're going to be tased if they don't comply with what we're telling them to do. We can, we count that as a use of force as well, so that way we can track that. We had two taser deployments in 2020. So that pretty much makes up the majority of everything that we have for use of force.
I've got one other question. I know that's been on the news and stuff, you know, a lot, a lot of these cities are defunding the police staff. You know, they're going after these chokeholds and stuff. They, you know, we don't do chokeholds, do we? Yeah.
Chokeholds are banned.
Yeah.
By our policy unless it's a deadly force situation.
Okay. But they, you know, that's what they bring up, you know, most often is chokeholds.
Absolutely. We, we did not deploy any chokeholds whatsoever in 2020. Along those same lines, we only had minor injuries reported by citizens and by officers at minimal time loss. I think the most time loss was maybe one shift by an officer. There was no use of force that resulted in a complaint that was generated from any citizen. We also, again, we utilized no chokeholds. I think they are banned by policy unless by deadly force. And then there was also no deadly force used during the matchup. So no tongs, no OC spray, or any of that. For whatever reason, in 2020, we had six, six, which was, four of them we had in 2019, which was one. So as a department, again, just like you, you do a review process every time you have a. Our policy is based on matrix. And that matrix pretty much dictates who officers are going to pursue and when they're going to discontinue pursuit. So out of the six, we had five of the policy compliant and one of the non. So in that one, we did some coaching and some training and brought that officer in and basically corrected that issue with that one. So there were no collisions or injuries as a result of any of our pursuits. Professional accountability. Here we talk about complaints and internal investigations, which run, they basically coincide with each other. So in 2020, we had four total either complaints or internal investigations. And what it turned out to be was that we had two sustained. One was a traffic complaint where the officer was actually found to be, it was sustained that the complaint, the officer cut another person off in traffic. So again, that officer received some coaching and brought them up to speed with that. And then the other one was an internal investigation that resulted in some discipline. There were two complaints that were filed because of demeanor, and both of those were investigated and found that they were not sustained. So there was no grounds for the complaint. Budget. We set at about 3.05 million for our budget. We, we came in about $163,000 under budget in 2020. For the last six years, we've come in under $100,000 under budget, like I said, the last six years.
So you have a $3 million budget?
Yes. It's predominantly personnel costs in the budget, somewhere around $500,000.
But several, but those couple of years, we weren't filled with uniformed officers. I mean, we've been short for several years. Is that right?
Yeah. So talk about mental health. Our mental health calls went up drastically in 2020. We saw a 31% increase in the number of mental health crisis calls that officers were responding to, which spawned Chief putting in for the. to, which spawned chief putting in for the cops grant. And at this point, we do have a mental health officer in place. Officer Texhorn that I mentioned earlier, who has promoted the MPO. She was formerly our school resource officer at the middle school. She now serves the department as the mental health officer. She's been on leave and she's been back for about three to four weeks now, and she's hit the ground running. We, we basically have to construct mental health officer program and we've gotten off to a really good start. She's, she's doing a lot of mental health follow-ups and violence follow-up work as well. So we entered into a partnership with the South Central Kansas Medical Center, which was able to get us a drug takeback box that we have in the lobby. We actually have a small room that's...
Now, what is it? What is that box?
Basically a place that community can come in and drop off their old medication.
Okay, okay.
Any meds, not just pain or any other...
Right.
Under substance.
And there are certain criteria factors around the box. But along the same lines, the hospital was also able to get an incinerator. So that way, when we do collect those, those medications from the public, we have a place to be able to safely dispose of them. So it's really an asset.
Was it scenerated at the hospital or is it? Okay, good.
And it's, it's countywide use, so other agencies are also using it as well. In 2020, we were able to secure a Healthy Pathways Grant through Blue Cross Blue Shield. This enabled us to give a $10,000 grant to focus on healthy eating. One thing that's important to us is making sure that our officers are physically well, but also mentally well. So this kind of took care of the physical aspect of it. So throughout this grant, we've been able to purchase a refrigerator and then also be able to offer healthy food options for the officers to be able to snack on. And being around police work for as long as I have, it's very unpredictable whether or not we actually get to eat a meal. So it's, it's very nice to be able to grab an apple and be able to go and, and do those things. So this has really been an asset to us over time and work at the point where we're going to close this grant out, but it is, it has really been beneficial to us. Picture our fridge. So we had quite a few awards in 2020. We were recognized by RCB Bank for the Community Builder Award back in, on March 11th, and that was just like right edge of pre-COVID. So they honored us for the amount of community outreach programs that we do. So that was a really nice reception that we got from RCB. Also in 2020, we recognized some officers for some lifesaving events back in November. Officer Gosh had responded to Walmart and CPR, which resulted in the saving of a life. Presented that to you back then. Officer Escaredo and Officer Schenman were on routine patrol when they were flagged down. There was a small boy choking on gum, but they were able to do the, the... I'm a little bit, yes, thank you. And was able to free the gun from the airway and the child was fine today. That's good. Officer Tuxhorn also was recognized for giving CPR to a second week old baby. And so she was honored with that lifesaving award as well. Then we kind of transitioned into our community support and outreach. Obviously, the pandemic changed how we contacted the public. So with school shutdowns, that really kind of changed our approaches to be able to go into the schools. So prior to COVID, we spent a lot of time doing Hi-Fi Fridays and going to lunches and, and going into classrooms reading. So during COVID, we just weren't able to do those things. So we had to really find ways to try to connect. One thing that we did continue to do is popsicle patrol, because we found a way to do that safely. So at one point, the rec center was offering free meals, I think it was on Monday evenings and afternoons. We were actually giving away entire bundles of popsicles to motorists as they were coming through, so that way they could take it home and freeze it. So it was a take and freeze type approach too. We were able to hold a couple Coffee with the Cops events. We, we've actually got probably one or two of these coming up pretty soon, since we're kind of on the backside of COVID. So I would invite everybody to come out to those Coffee with the Cops events. And there's no agenda, there's no nothing, it's just us and the people show up and we just talk about whatever people want to talk about. So it's really a great way for us to connect with people. Okay, Chief, can we get those Coffee with the Cops like in the old times that the city puts out? Absolutely. Absolutely, we can find them on there. So again, I mentioned popsicle patrol. This is probably one of my favorite things to do. We recently put out a post on Facebook asking the community for help in providing popsicles. And just today, we've been inundated with popsicles. They're actually stacked up in our hallway right now. So it's fantastic how the community relates to us and is responsive to the things that we need. Social media, we have a very good social media presence with both Facebook and Twitter. We are expanding that to neighbors and also next door. So we believe that it's very important for us to get messages out to our community to educate them, but also let them know some of the things that we're doing, especially when it comes to community outreach. That's been a very important thing for us moving forward. And then our partnership with USD 470, we have two school resource officers that are currently staffed at the middle school and also at the high school. They, they work tirelessly to help the administration staff at both of those schools. They're also responsible for delivering our Dare Camp during the summer, which in 2020 we had to cancel due to COVID. And then also National Night Out, which we normally have in October because the weather's better. And so we plan to full steam ahead this year with our Dare Camp International Night Out. We actually can't wait.
So you have four school resource officers?
Except two.
Two.
So one at the high school. So the pandemic kind of changed some of the other programs that we, that we do. The Fraternal, Fraternal Order of Police do a Shop with a Cop event every year. We changed it to Shop by a Cop. So that way, we had less exposure to families that are in need in the community, but we still fill the need by reaching out to them to see what, see what they needed. And then we had officers go do that shopping for them. They wrapped it and then delivered it to their houses this year. So it was a little bit different because normally we go and shop with families, which gives us a little bit to be connected. And then one of the very last things we did in 2020 was stuff the Cruiser event. We knew that the canned food drive through the middle school was being canceled due to COVID. So we got with Man and Ministries through the First Baptist Church to see if we could fill a need, and we certainly did, because we ended up collecting, I think, 5,500 pounds of food in about four or five outings at the ones at Walmart. So our community came out, was absolutely fantastic. It gave us an opportunity to connect with them, even though it was during the pandemic, right out in front of the store. And you can see that some of those cars were really weighed down with food that went to people that were in need in our community. So that pretty much wraps up the annual report. The only thing that I was going to mention was moving forward in focus for 2021 is to continue to find ways to reduce crime and traffic safety. We're really going to try to ramp up education through social media, which we've really already started doing. You've noticed that lately. Continue a high level of community outreach, which helps build trust in the community. So we really want to get back to those things that we were doing in 2019 before to reach our community, build trust. I think that now is the perfect time to, to be able to do those things. And it's a volatile time when it comes to what police or how people perceive the police. So for us to be out contacting people and having conversations, I think that that's going to help build trust within our community. We're going to stay attuned to officer wellness, both physical and mental, because we got to keep our police officers healthy on both aspects, so both physically and mentally. We got to keep them in a good place. We're going to be responsive to the community's needs when it comes to mental health crisis. Obviously, with the mental health officer now onboard, be more focused on helping people that are in need.
I've got a follow-up question on that, because, you know, Canyon's the one that kind of have, you know, get that thing going. But the question I have is, you know, the purpose of it was to try to keep them out of the court system, you know, because most times they're on medication, they're off on their medication or something like that, they don't take it. So we throw them back in the court system, you know, go through that process, and then, and then they're out again, and they, and then two or three months later, they're back in the, you know, it's just a repeat. And that's supposed to stop that stuff, isn't it? I mean, but how do, how you, how do you handle that thing, Larry? I mean, on the court system, I mean, do we have a special judge for that? Or I mean, how's that going to work?
No, right now, there's just a process called involuntary commitment. And you file a case and you're able, officers are able to take them into protective custody. They go to a facility and doctors there. You're exactly right. Most of the time, it's a matter of somebody either self-medicating or want to get off the medications, and they get them medicated again and they come back, only sometimes it'll be very much repeaters afterwards. That may be part of what we're talking about, but I think there's also a, there's that climate and there's just some other people that just think Officer Tuxhorn reaching out to that, that just needs some help. Maybe it's, maybe it's not only medication, it's medication and other things.
I know, I mean, Peters, he was on, you know, he's mentioned that before, you know, like, you know, getting them out of our court system and doing like what you're doing, you know?
Right, that, that would, that would be the goal. And I, I think the, the grant that they have is, is really a good place to start because they're at the grassroots.
Yeah.
They see what goes on with these people's lives and all that. I hope from that we'll grow something, something better in the courts. That I know Judge Smith has got a mental health court. It's still be court, but it won't be, it won't, it won't be totally the way it is now.
Right.
I understand, but...
At least they have a fighting chance, I mean.
It's an area that, that was, that, that came about because back in George Bush's time, the first, I mean, they gave more rights to those with mental challenges who were basically hospitalized and everybody said, that's too much for them, they don't need to be hospitalized, they need something else. And we never were really very good at coming up with what the something else was. And, and so that's where we're at, and that's where the struggle is. And...
But how long is it?
I mean, it's, it's a national problem. Every city, county, every state. EMS deals with it, fire department guys deal with it, park department guys deal with it, police officers, I mean, they, they run into situations where these citizens are either powerful or emotional, and so doesn't seem to be a reason for that, you know? Why are you so upset, you know? And so then they have to, they have to bring that down. Sometimes charges are brought, and that's, the, the mental health court is for trying to fill the gap of what the problem is and, and having a mental health officer that can start out. It's not always something big, sometimes it's very minor. And to us, but to them, it's crisis level.
One thing that I've noticed just in the short period of time that she's been doing it in our conversations is we lack the follow-up piece. So if the officers that are on patrol contact someone that's in mental crisis and get them to services and we get them screened, and sometimes they get screened and they make a plan, what's called a safety plan, and they get sent back home. We, what we've been missing is that follow-up piece. So something that Officer Tuxhorn has been doing is making those calls the day after and say, hey, this is Officer Tuxhorn with the police department. Are you doing okay? Is there anything that we can do to help you? And it may be something as simple as giving them a ride to Fort County to, to get to their meeting.
That's going to be a waterfall relationship.
Very good.
And the same hospital has the same problem.
Comes to that follow-up piece.
Now, my question is on that grant, how long does that last? I mean, is it last two years or?
It was a two-year grant.
It's a two-year.
Can you reapply for it or not?
Probably can, there, I know that there's a cost share.
It's well worth it.
Next time.
Well worth it. It's extremely well worth it. Yeah.
By the, by the organization.
Okay. I think it's really a waterfall.
Yeah, it's, it's needed.
I think hopefully by then, and I'm sure Chief here would agree, that there's going to be some savings involved to the department, maybe to this, or at least to the city.
Yeah.
That would justify keeping someone on. That's kind of the plan?
Yes.
That's what I was...
The other aspect too is that creates enough person to be able to pick up and free an officer that would be dedicated to that crisis call for hours, because sometimes it does take hours. So she can actually step in and take control of that situation. If you need the officer to go back to, so it's a, it's a force multiplier.
Yeah.
I respect. The other, the one last thing that I want to mention when it comes to mental health is that coming up in the very near future, we've been working on a suicide prevention coalition. And Officer Tuxhorn is going to be very involved in that process, but we're looking at it from a county-wide basis and putting out information to, to the community on recognizing the signs of suicide. So that's something that's really exciting coming up, and I'm really passionate about making sure that that program is off the ground. We're also looking at ways to work into the school districts with suicide prevention as well within the county. So that's going to be something that's going to be coming up very shortly.
So, so does Winfield and the county have a mental health officer already too, or do they not? Is there any chance of them doing something like that? Don't know? Haven't, haven't had that discussion.
I would say that, didn't mean to interrupt, I would say, I would hope so, because I get several calls from Winfield PD throughout the week, and it's usually in the middle of the night we have a situation, usually involves one of these kind of things.
But I think if we keep a good track record, I know you guys will and stuff, I think eventually they'll follow along in the same, yeah, because this mental health thing is serious for all towns, like Canyon's saying, I mean, it's...
National crisis.
Yeah, and, and it's, a lot of time, it's just a simple thing, you know? You know, getting them the right spot or they, you know, getting the right medication and stuff, but we got to get them out of that judicial system that repeats up and get them help, you know?
Well, it's nice to have a contact at the police department, that some of these people...
Because that's where the partnership gets built.
And that relationship sometimes will help diffuse a situation or...
The police department is going to trust you.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, that's, that's the problem. I mean, you guys are the first responders, you're going to see it right off the bat, you know? We don't, you know, but it's everywhere, so.
Then the last thing for 2021 is I want to see us get to the point where we get accredited through Kalia. And I know that we're working hard to get to that direction, but I think we can see the finish line. It's going to happen sometime at the end of the year versus next year. And that's just best place practices and continuing that program.
Yeah. You've done a lot with us, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you for a lot. Thank you for your baby.
Chief, I have a question. Is there a way that, like the National Night Out, when you start that up again, that police officers can show up at some of these barbecues within their districts so that people get to know law enforcement more from a personal standpoint? I don't know how you'd connect, except maybe the officers are just driving around looking for people gathered together on that particular night.
I can still, I can answer that question for you. We have the block parties, and we register our block parties, and all the policemen will come around and they'll bring us the cups and stuff like that, and they'll come to your block parties that where you can meet them, eat with you and so forth. There is...
I think you've got a carbon monoxide detector out there.
Would you, would, did you register through the police barb anywhere?
I think that's kind of the point, is that maybe not everybody registers, but if...
They register, because there's prizes.
Yeah. But if, if they don't, if they don't know if you're happening, you know, they, they probably won't come, you know, that's usually why you register.
Sometimes they come at the beginning, sometimes in the middle, they came in hours kind of towards the end. I think they actually help tear down tables. I mean, they didn't even have to do that.
I think in 2019, we had 17 parties and we only have so many officers that are on that night, which is all hands on deck night, so everybody comes in.
And commissioners are out.
Yeah.
We've gone out with...
Parties?
Chief, fired... Chief, fire chief and police chief and, I mean, there's, I've gone out with several of them and so that is.
It's a kickoff party and then.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Thank you.
It's kind of tough to catch all of them. Some of them get done, because we went a couple down south, first or second, and they all, all disappeared. And just the kids were playing, so we still stopped and said hi to them, so. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
We try to make it. Hey, Mayor?
Yes. Can Mike give an update on the Brad Meek?
Yes, sure.
We received our first name of application from the construction today. Thirty-seven percent complete, just to go to the project. Replacing 2.37 miles of waterline, two-thirds is six-inch, which is replacing the four-inch and the other third is eight.
Say 2.3 miles?
2.37 miles.
Okay.
14 new six-inch fire hydrants, which is ready to go in through the fire protection. And 198 service conventions to the houses.
Oh.
So say that again on fire hydrants?
14 new six-inch.
14 new fire hydrants.
With snores, what are those called?
Stores.
Stores. Quick, quick connect for the fire. The overall project cost is $1,268,927.
Swallow. They asked me that today and I went off very much, I said like 1.3.
Yeah.
Pretty darn close.
We projected 1.3.
Yeah.
Rounded to $1,269,000. The 2.37 miles. Also today, we talked to the regro hood and they're going to completely replace across that zone, which they're going to have to go through KEDO to get the permit. And hopefully they'll be able to leave at least one lane open. Otherwise, we'll have to deter the traffic, so, which I guess the deterrent would be, I always get a tailor and tile mixed up, which ties into the. Tailor.
Tailor.
Tailor. To 6th Street and then 6th Street up to, I think it'd be the best.
But once it's fixed, it's going to be totally fixed.
Right, totally.
They're not just going to piecemeal it together, they're going to pull it and fix the whole thing.
So thanks to one of the commissioners.
When that young railroad guy got there, he said.
Romeo.
Yeah, man, this is old stuff. I've never seen anything like this and I've been at the railroad a long time, like three.
One time, we were missing, we were down there with the regiment, the high-end semis headed north. I mean, inside lane, we're actually going into the oncoming traffic in the south.
Yeah. Because they, they think it's metal, so they think they're going to pop a tire hitting it.
So have they put up barricades?
No.
For that?
No, they still, they still will.
I mean, even for that hole that's there?
No.
I had it the other day, so. When that does happen, can they put signs farther down the road with flashing lights?
Oh, yeah.
Is the last time that was out, there weren't flashing lights?
When they do the replacement?
Well, no, I mean, the, the advance notice that the road is closed or there's a barricade up for.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there, there wasn't one up with flashing lights here a couple of years ago, a year or two ago.
They will.
Okay.
You wrote the states of that, so. They have asked the city to replace a two-foot strip of asphalt. So when that asphalt.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, thank you.
This time, it's at 6:24, we'll say 6:20. Yeah, so I will move that the city commission recess into executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1. To discuss the police chief position. The open meeting will resume in this room at 6:35, so that'll be 10 minutes.
I'll second that.
And that would include, we want Larry and Randy, I assume.
That includes them, right?
Yep.
So, oh, you second that?
Second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 10 minutes when we get in there, Andrew.
This conference will now be recorded.